Ladies and gentlemen, that was the Condenza String Orchestra. And how totally beautiful that was. Thank you so much. Yes, go ahead and clap. It's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And again, thank you for that beautiful music. Do we have an invocation? Anyone on particular to do the invocation tonight? Okay, so I'm gonna call on our city manager for the invocation. And let's do a flag salute. Mr. Ruiz, would you do the flag salute for us tonight? And come up to the podium after the invocation. Please stand.
Would you please stand? Please bow your head. Dearly Father Lord, we just, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the privilege of joining together in local government to do the business of the people. It is a privilege. But we just pray for the residents of Temecula. We pray for safety and health. We pray for our first responders, day to day, and their safety and security. But we pray for wisdom and discernment for this city council, this city staff, and all the business that is conducted in these chambers. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Good evening, everyone. If you would please join me in saluting our flag of this great nation, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you, everyone. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, I have clowns to the left of me, jokers to the right. Could you call the roll?
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron is absent. Councilmember Schwank?
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nigar.
And the mayor is here. Now, what'd you say?
I wanted to be the joker.
Well, you know, now you're the clown to the left for tonight.
For tonight.
Now's the time for presentations and proclamations. Before I do that, do we have government students here? Let me just inquire real quickly. Do I have any golden bears here? All right, golden bears in the house. Good to see ya. What about chaperone pumas? Any pumas? All right, we got one or two pumas. All right, how about Great Oak Wolf Pack? All right.
Oh, slam tonight.
Now, you know, I know we have Linfield in the house. And we're gonna celebrate some certificates of achievement for volleyball and for football. But I also wanna start, because we have so many Linfield students here recognizing somebody who passed away this past week, and that was Drake Charles. Who, well, anybody who goes to Linfield knows Drake and just knows how much to the community that he played. He was a very young man. And his death was due to a disease that he had for a while. And we're all gonna miss him very much. So I'm sure his spirit hovers over us as we go ahead and celebrate a couple of things. So first, I'd like to celebrate the presentation of certificates of achievement to Linfield Christian High School varsity volleyball team. Let's do the volleyball first. And Stu, could you go ahead and read the proclamation?
Of course.
Glad you wore your glasses.
I just refused the mic, 'cause you were gonna do it. All right, "The city of Temecula congratulates the Linfield High School girls volleyball, varsity volleyball team on their outstanding accomplishment and effort in earning the 2018 CIF Division VII championship. They won the Cal Lutheran Tournament and qualified for playoffs for the first time in nine years with a league record of 11 and 13." Eleven and three. And it was for, I'm a little dyslexic, by the way. And it was the first time they qualified for state finals. The team won 30 games this season, the most games won in a season in the school history, with an overall record of 30 and 5. We are proud of the team's dedication and talent, and we wish them continued success in the sport of volleyball and with their future endeavors."
Thank you, Stu. That's fantastic. Ladies, congratulations. So, here's what we're, here's what we're gonna do, because this stuff is a big deal for us. We like this stuff. So, I'm gonna call your name. And Mr. Stewart here's gonna hand your certificate. But then if you can just kinda line up as we call your name, 'cause we're gonna take some pictures. Parents, staff, anybody who's got a camera and wants a picture, go ahead and get ready to get it queued up. You can come up, take a picture of your girl, whatever you wanna do, you can't violate anything. So, first one I wanna call is champion Samantha Hoo-hooan. Did I say it right? Or did I butcher it?
Hoo-hooan.
Hoo-hooan, thank you. All right, come on up. Come on up. Right up there. Right here in front of us.
Here, 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 right here.
Right there.
Come back up, back up, back up, back up.
There you go, there you go.
There you go.
Okay.
Perfect. Everybody can see you now.
There's a reason why I call volleyball before football. Guys, are you getting this? You know where you're gonna have to line up, okay? All right. Okay, Peyton Howie. Champion Peyton Howie. Peyton, are you here?
Nope.
Okay. Champion Haley Manning. Champion Camden Meehan. Champion Sarah Newman. Champion Mackenzie Phelps. Champion Kelly Roche. Champion Devon Silverston. I'm presuming this is your sister, Champion Kelly Silverston. Champion Elena Tecker. Champion Paige Williams. Coach of champions, Ryan McKenzie. And principal of champions, Holly Wilson. Are you here, Holly? All right, parents, friends, relatives, here are your champions. Come on up, take your pictures if you'd like. And feel free to come up and get closer, whatever you wanna do.
Oh yeah, open your, open your, um...
Yeah, open your certificates.
Certificates, yeah.
And a picture overhead is also good, too. Ladies, don't be nervous, there's about 10,000 people watching you right now at home saying, All right, ladies, again, congratulations. You represent us well. Mr. Stewart, get your glasses on the microphone there. And let's go ahead and read that football proclamation.
Okay. "The city of Temecula congratulates the Linfield Christian High School varsity football team on their astounding accomplishment and effort in earning the 2018 Division XII state championship. The team scored 820 points, which is first in the state in CIF and second in the nation. The record is also, this record is also second in the state history and 12th in the nation's history. The team advanced to win second place in the CIF State Division 5A Southern Regional Championship. We are proud of the team's dedication and talent, and we wish them continued success in the sport of football and their future endeavors."
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All right, guys, are you ready? You're the football team. Are you ready?
Ready!
Thank you.
That was pretty, that was bad.
All right. All right. All right. No, no, you don't, wasn't that a little weak?
It was very weak.
It's not gone weak. We're just not gonna let that one slip. Let's do that again. Football team, are you ready?
Ready!
That's it, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, that first one was kinda like, "mrrr."
Yeah, I know, I know. All right, champion Tyson Fox. Champion Michael Harkins. Oh, well, I've already started with the players, so just fake it, and they'll work it all out. Okay?
Just give them any certificate and...
Okay. Champion Jared Hootleberg. Champion Kendrick Jamison. Champion Micah Nips. Champion Justin Manqueros. Don't let you get caught up.
You know what, I'm just gonna count you one, and I'll let you go.
There you go. Champion Alex Ruiz. Champion Caleb Marash. Champion Aiden Taylor. Okay, now the coaches of these champions. My good friend Deshaun Burns. Are you here, Deshaun?
There he is.
All right. Coach of champions, Tyson Caldwell. Coach Caldwell. Coach Ben Coleman. All right, Coach Eugene Miranda. Coach Ray Leonard. And Coach Shirley Ruiz. Ladies and gentlemen, these are your champions and their coaches. Oh, do we?
Oh, do we forget some? Who did we forget?
Okay, I don't have them on my list. Who did we miss? What? Come on up, guys.
Oh my goodness.
Looks like we have quite a bit.
I thought you guys were having to play both sides if you were...
We'll work it out. Okay, you wanna do that? Or do you want me? Okay, all right. So, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, guys, we'll sort this all out. I think the ones that we didn't have search for, we didn't know that you were coming. So, we'll work it all out. Do not worry. Lions, ready?
Ready!
Whoa, that was good. That was better.
All right. All right, Deshaun, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Hey, these are your champions. Come on up and take some pictures, folks.
We're proud of you. Hold your certificate up. Now turn around and look how big you look on the big screen.
Yeah. All right, there you guys go. Congratulations, gents. And in case I forget, Mr. City Manager, I do wanna ask the council to adjourn in the name of Drake Charles when the time comes. I don't think I'll forget, but just in case I miss it.
I didn't know. I knew.
We'll let everybody get settled down. Ladies and gents, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're also welcome to leave if you want to. Your call. We'll just give you a few minutes to take your time and come out. All right. Chief Diehard, are you here? Come on down, chiefy. Somehow or another, I couldn't pick you out of the crowd in your civvies. It just doesn't look right, not having you here in your uniform, you know?
White, rubbing off on everybody. Peers are coming in.
Mr. Stewart, could you read the chief's proclamation?
Could I? That's the question of the day, can I? Okay, "The city of Temecula is proud to recognize Fire Chief Charlie Dehart on his retirement from Cal Fire and the city of Temecula. Chief Dehart began his fire service career as a volunteer firefighter in 1984 at Little Lake Fire Station number 26. In the early 90s, he was hired by Cal Fire as a part-time fire apparatus engineer. In 1997, Chief Dehart was promoted to captain, uh, fire captain within the Riverside County unit assigned to the Batista Camp. During his fire service career, Chief Dehart graduated from California Peace Officers and Standards Training and became the Fire Captain Specialist for Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department Law Enforcement Bureau. In 2008, he was promoted to Battalion Chief in Temecula. In 2012, Chief Dehart returned to the Law Enforcement Bureau as their Battalion Chief, and in 2016, he was promoted to Division Chief for Temecula and Battalion 15. We congratulate Chief Dehart, Charlie Dehart, on his many accomplishments during his long and distinguished career with Cal Fire, and we thank him for his contributions for the city of Temecula as fire chief."
Would you like to say some, some few words, Chief?
I mean, I'd just like to say thank you for, you know, the service. I got to come back and serve the rest of my career out here. Aaron and Greg, thank you for putting up with me. I know sometimes I'm a little hard-headed, but that's the way you get things done, so... And, you know, the rest of the executive team, thank you very much. So, you guys are awesome, and you should be proud of your executive team. You've got a really good team running your city.
Thank you, chief. Who'd you bring with you? Looks like we got part of the squad out here.
Yep, and the folks that make it all happen. So, if it wasn't for them, my career wouldn't be successful. They're the ones that make me look good. So, and then of course, the boss-boss that's in the back on her phone.
We're always glad to see you, you ladies and gents, in our halls. And thank you, chief, for your service to the city.
Thank you.
And we have this loving parting gift. It's a cool paperweight that says, "Chief Dehart, Charlie Dehart, in recognition of your service and dedication, City of Temecula Fire Department, January 22nd, 2019." Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have one more presentation. If I, if she's anything like I know her to be, Ms. Larson, and just hold on to your seats, 'cause Ms. Larson's gonna tell us about the Reality Rally. Go get 'em, Jillian, here we go.
Gosh, I can't believe it's time again already.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, and new member, Councilmember Schwank, and everybody else. I want to show you what happened. So, as you can see, Lake Elsinore has challenged you again, and all of the other cities. We had nine cities represented this past year. And this isn't just about amazing, awesome intercity collaboration, camaraderie, and fun. It's about fundraising. And with Michelle's Place opening their center to serve all cancers, it increases our fervor and our desire and our passion to make this event happen every year. So, we really encourage you, and Joanie Hoover is our executive team director, and she and I, Reality Rally, and Michelle's Place, challenge all of you to come on back on. We've got two teams right here, Mr. Willis and Mr. Schwank. You can challenge each other, and we'd love to see you guys back. We want the whole of Temecula to know. We want everybody to know what we do. We're going into our ninth year of producing this event, and we have raised over $500,000 for Michelle's Place so far. And I say "we," because otherwise, if it wasn't a "we," which is everybody, this idea would still be in my head in the jungle of Gabon after I was booted off Survivor. So, see what happened. And welcome to Beat Lake Elsinore, but don't tell them I said that. So, thank you so much for being part of us every year.
Jillian, thank you. Appreciate you coming and all the work you've done with Reality Rally. And you know, people don't realize you do it for just the love of it. That's just amazing. So, we thank you.
Thank you. And every single person who plays a part in Reality Rally does not make a penny. We don't have overhead, we all have over heart. So, thank you, guys.
Councilmember Schwank, I'm just curious, are you gonna participate in that this year?
Yeah, definitely. I think I did, I have five years in a row now, so I'll make it six, and it's a fun event.
You think Mayor Pro Tem Stewart would make a good teammate?
I, yeah. He's gonna be fantastic on my team.
Aaron Adams, too, you think?
I think Aaron will be great.
Yeah, yeah, maybe Randy, City Clerk Randy Joel, maybe. I was thinking about you. I knew that was coming somewhere down the pipe.
Will Stu have to read anything?
All right. Now, you know what? We do have a member of Amenefi Team in the audience. You guys gonna join again, Mr. Leesmeyer?
It'll be you then.
All right. Thanks. What a great event. And yes, you know what? It does a lot of things, but it does build camaraderie, and it does help fight that scourge of cancer. So, thanks again. Okay, we've come to the end of presentations and proclamations. Now's the time for public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have one public comment.
Okay, so, go ahead and roll the tape, reading the rules.
All right, boys and girls. Today, we are going to read the rules for public comments. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and say your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The end. Now you know all the rules. All the rules for public comments.
Madam City Clerk, call the first speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, our one and only speaker is Jennifer Richard.
Ms. Richard, welcome. It's your presence here that allowed us to play that video.
I'm glad I was able to do so. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Richard, and I'm here on behalf of Voices for Children. And I'd like to thank the council for providing CDBG funding to support our court-appointed special advocate program, or CASA program. As you may or may not know, CASAs are very special volunteers who are paired with a single child or sibling group in foster care. They are a consistent adult presence in the child's life as the child moves from foster home to foster home. They advocate for the child's best interests in court, the school, and in the community. Voices for Children is the only organization authorized to provide this life-changing service in Riverside County. And last year, we served 356 children, and we're on track to serve 400 this year. With the support of... With the support of last year's CDBG award, Voices for Children served three Temecula foster children, and Voices also funded an additional three Temecula foster children, providing them with their very own CASA for an entire year. In order to carry out our mission, we must raise all of the funds required to put forward our program, and you've made a short-term and long-term investment in the kids in your community, and we thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's now time for City Council Reports. My colleagues, get in the queue if you have something. I don't see anybody in the queue. Okay. Oh, go for it.
So, I think it's February 2nd, we start our second construction trades class, and it's sold out. So, the first one we did, we only had 12, we had 15 sign up, 12 graduated, and this year we have a full 30 in this class, which basically is going to give these individuals 18 years and older some skill sets that's going to make them valuable, hopefully, to a construction firm. So, learning basic, how to use basic tools, power tools, OSHA regulations, and also how to read blueprints, which, from when I talk to a contractor, that is one of the biggest things that they have with people, is knowing how to read a blueprint. So, we teach them how to do that. So, we give them some valuable skills, and, you know, frankly, the class is not cheap. It's like $300, but it's a good investment for someone who is looking to get into the trade. So, it's sold out this year, but look for next.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve the action minutes of January 8th, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands, that's the checks the city writes. Four, approve the treasurer's report as of November 30th, 2018. Five, appoint members of Community Services Commission. Six, approve professional services agreement with Webb Municipal Finance LLC to prepare annual levy assessment analysis. Seven, approve Second Amendment to the Maintenance Services Agreement with Diversified Waterscapes Inc. And eight, approve parcel map 37448 located at northwest corner of Front Street and First Street in Old Town. Do I have a motion, or if anybody like to pull anything?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, could we pull item five?
Yeah.
I'd move the balance, though.
Okay, so we have a motion for the balance by Councilmember Schwank, and a second by Councilmember Edwards. Let's go ahead and vote on that. Did you press your second, Mary Ann? We're working with the system, first time today, by the way, ladies and gentlemen. It looks like the vote came up, everybody yes. So, 401 abstention. Councilmember Ron is out of town this evening, so that passes 40. The briefest of staff reports, Ms. Joel, for item number five.
Mr. Mayor, this was a vacancy related to Councilmember Schwank joining the City Council, and also an additional vacancy with former Commissioner Nelson leaving to go out of the area, and we went ahead and posted and published pursuant to law. The subcommittee went ahead and recommended the appointment of Commissioner, of Adam Ruiz and Gary Adi to the commission, and unless Council has additional questions, that is the staff report.
Mr. Schwank, the floor's all yours.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all the applicants. I know when you, when you fill that out, you put yourself out there. You also put yourself out there to serve, and I know you all want to be a part of that commission. So just wanted to say thanks to everyone that applied. Looking at the two that were recommended to fill those seats, if, you know, we pass that tonight, I think you guys bring a lot to the table. I'm excited for, for what's going on in Community Services. And having come from that seat, coming, come from there, it's important to me that you guys get involved, and I know both of you will. But there's no one way to be a commissioner, there's no handbook, well, there is technically a handbook, but, but there's no one way to be a commissioner. You have to find your own way, lean on other commissioners, lean on staff, but be yourself, be true to yourself, and then everything else will fall in place, so, that's all. Thank you.
Well said. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Councilmember Schwank. Before we vote, I see Adam Ruiz, there's Mr. Adi here, there you are. Let's take a vote, and then we'll recognize you. Go ahead and cast your vote. We're getting there.
Councilmember Edwards, we can have you vote.
Yeah, there you go.
I pushed the motion button.
Sorry, you'll get there. Like I said, brand new, 4-0. Congratulations, please stand. Our two newest commissioners, I'll tell you something, Councilmember Schwank set the bar very, very high. So, and, boy, what virtuous words you said. You know what, you got to find your own way, and there's many ways to be a commissioner, you got to find your own, and I'm sure you got all of us to support you as well. It's the best staff in California. Thank you, guys, congratulations. Okay, right now I'm going to recess, and Temecula City Council will turn the gavel over to President James Stewart of Temecula Community Services District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Please note that all directors are here except for Director Ron. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Alls we have on the agenda tonight is the consent calendar. So, number nine, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted on, by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Service District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number nine, approve the action minutes of January 8th, 2019.
I've already moved it.
Second.
Second.
Please vote. All right, that's 4-0. Director of Community Services, do we have a report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President, but just congrats to our new commissioners. Looking forward to working with you.
General Manors' report.
Congratulations to the new commissioners as well. Welcome.
Board of Directors' report. Nothing? Okay. I will adjourn the meeting. Turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, I'm going to convene the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Madam City Clerk, let the record reflect that all agency members are here, with the exception of Agency Member Ron. Do we have any public comments? No public comments, so we have one consent calendar item, that's item number 10, approve the action minutes of January 8th, 2019. Could I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
That was Councilmember Edwards, Mayor Pro Tem, and Director Stewart. Please cast your vote. And that passes 4-0 with one absent. Executive Director, you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight.
Any Board of Directors have anything to say?
No.
Nothing? Then I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next regular meeting of February the 12th, 2019. Now going to convene the Temecula Housing Authority, oh, there's no meeting here, so we're not going to convene that, okay? But we will convene the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Madam City Clerk, let the record reflect, all agency members are here except Councilmember Ron. Do we have any public comments? Okay, so we'll move to the consent calendar. We, looks like we have one, two, two items. Item 11, approve the action minutes of January 8th, 2019. And 12, adopt ordinance number TPFA 19-01, levying special taxes within Temecula Public Financing Authority, Community Facilities District number 19-01, municipal services for Cypress Ridge Development, TriPoint Homes Inc. This is our second reading. Any comments? There's no speakers on this, this consent item. Okay, very good. We'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
That was Councilmember Edwards, Mayor Pro Tem, Agency Member Stewart. Please cast your vote. And that passes 4-0 with one absent. Do we have a Director's Report?
Nothing tonight.
Any Board of Directors? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting till Tuesday, February 12th. Now I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, we'll go to council business. Item 13, introduce an ordinance amending the Western Riverside Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Program to include a process for Western Riverside Council of Governments to calculate and collect fees on behalf of the City of Temecula. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a proposed amendment to the Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, otherwise known as TUMF, ordinance to include a process for Western Riverside Council of Governments to calculate and collect fees on behalf of the City of Temecula. So for some background, as many of you know, the City of Temecula is a member jurisdiction of the Western Riverside Council of Governments, otherwise known as WRCOG, a joint powers agency comprised of the county of Riverside and 18 cities located in Western Riverside County. In 2003, WRCOG member jurisdictions approved the TUMF program, which collects funds needed to enlarge the capacity of the regional system of highways and arterials. The ordinance amendment being proposed is very specific and is only dealing with the process by which the TUMF fees are calculated and collected. More specifically, which agency, the city or WRCOG, is assuming the responsibility for calculation and collection of TUMF fees. There are no other amendments to the TUMF program before the council tonight. In early 2018, WRCOG staff presented a potentially, a potential policy change to the TUMF calculation process to allow member agencies the option, but not the obligation, to shift responsibility for TUMF calculations and collections from member agencies to WRCOG in an effort to improve the efficiency of the overall process for developers, WRCOG, and member agency cities. After review and recommendation by all the pertinent technical advisory committees, including the Public Works, Planning, Finance, and City Managers Committees, on October 1st, 2018, the WRCOG Executive Committee adopted a revision to the TUMF calculation and collection process to provide agencies an option in which WRCOG would assume the responsibility for calculation and collection of TUMF on behalf of member agencies. Currently, the current situation, the current, the current process includes city staff being responsible for calculating, collecting, and remitting all TUMF fees for all new developments within the city's jurisdiction. TUMF funds are calculated as new development projects come in and collected fees are remitted to WRCOG monthly, while in-depth reconciliation reviews are conducted on an annual basis. In addition, under the current process, member agencies, including the city, bear the responsibility and liability for any errors related to TUMF calculations and collections. Staff's recommendation is to take advantage of the newly available option to shift responsibility for fee calculation and collection of WRCOG. In staff's opinion, it is staff's opinion, that delegating the TUMF calculation and collection of WRCOG provides a number of benefits to the city, including significant reduction in city staff time required to calculate, collect, and remit TUMF, remit TUMF fees, overall reduced time and complexity for develop, development project applicants, elimination of the need for extensive end-of-year reconciliation reviews by city staff, and a shift of the liability for collection and calculation errors from the city to WRCOG. Going forward, the general process for city staff will require the submittal to WRCOG of a simple electronically completed TUMF calculation, calculation worksheet. Staff from WRCOG has committed to a 48-hour response time where most calculations will be completed in that timeframe, or additional information will be requested within 48 hours. So there again, no other amendments to the TUMF program are proposed beyond that which has been previously described. The city attorney finds that transferring, that transferring calculation and collection of TUMF fees to WRCOG is permissible, permissible under the Mitigation Fee Act, and with that, staff has recommended the City Council adopt the ordinance as presented. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Now's the time for questions, questions of Mr. Watson. I don't see any questions. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak? Seeing we don't, we can entertain a motion. I'll read the title. Yeah, please introduce the order. This being ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, amending Chapter 15.08 of the Temecula Municipal Code to include a process for Western Riverside Council of Governments' calculation and collection of fees under the Western Riverside County Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, TUMF program, and determining that the ordinance is exempt from further environmental review under Section 15378v4 of the SEQA guidelines. Motion, my Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. Please cast your votes. And that's 4-0 with one absent. Okay, we're almost at the end of our meeting. Let's see. I see our police chief is here. Chief, anything you'd like to say verbally?
Would you like me to, to do my report right now?
Yes, if you'd like to, sure.
Well...
Okay.
If I can see it come up on the board. Okay, during the month of December, we had 6,955 file numbers that were generated, which included 1,621 traffic citations and 19 parking citations. Our officers responded and investigated 60 traffic collisions and 69 DUI investigations. Wow. Our commercial enforcement officer issued 80 citations, and we had 86 calls for service regarding panhandling or loitering type of things. And out of that, we had eight outreach files. And speaking of our homeless outreach team and the great work that they are doing, I wanted to invite everyone to come out for coffee and cream with our homeless outreach team. That's going to be tomorrow, so if you're not doing anything from 8 to 10, come join us at the Bean Coffee Roasters.
Why does it say November 14th?
Did I say November 14th?
No, it says November 14th.
They sent you the wrong one.
Ah.
Yeah, that's not even close. It's tomorrow at the Bean Coffee Roasters on Inez.
Okay, nice catch.
So, good, I apologize for that.
Yeah, no worries.
I often get a lot of questions about our homeless outreach team, so this is a perfect opportunity to come out and meet all of them and ask questions.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move over to our commission reports. How about, let's start with Mr. Willis, Community Service Commissioner.
Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome the two new members. We'll have a good time, and if we put a team together, and, and Councilmember Schwank does too, I'm not going down in the boat.
Yeah. That was funny.
It's an inside story, we'll tell you about it later. Did we ever conclude that investigation, Mary Ann?
Yes, I believe Al Gore did it.
Okay, yeah, I believe so too. Other than that, I just wanted to tell you that we had a group of people come at the last meeting, and they discussed an Olympic-sized pool, which we've heard before. We listened, it was a ginormous group, but the best story of all was they stayed for the entire meeting. They did not leave, so we had a full house, so we were really proud of that, it was a lot of fun.
That never happens.
Yeah, it was amazing, it was awesome. But, you know, we, we heard them, they had about four speakers that spoke on it, and it was, it was interesting. And what we didn't know was we have a world champion swimmer in this town. Senior-type age bracket, right? Amazing, swims in open water and just an amazing story, so it was really fun to hear from her. Other than that, the fund committee rolls on. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, thanks for being, thanks for letting me be here.
Commissioner Willis, good to see you there in that chair, replacing now Councilman Schwank. How about Mr. Sullivan, Traffic Safety Commissioner?
Yes, our commission will be meeting this Thursday, 6:00 PM, in these chambers, and we'll be receiving some recommendations for traffic calming on Goldenrod Road, and the public's invited.
Thank you very much. So we go to our planning commissioner, Mr. Yeoman's. I understand you're having some, a little trouble speaking this evening, so raise your hand if everything is perfect on the planning commission. There you go, that's all we need to hear.
And welcome back.
We love you, Gary. You bet. City manager, you got a report for us?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. First off, really, it's good to see Commissioner Gary Yeoman's back in the chair over there. I just want to welcome him back to these chambers, and good to see you, Gary. Know you've been through a lot. And then, Mr. Mayor, just, just a reminder...
And then, Mr. Mayor, just, just a reminder, we did lose a dear friend in Drake Charles and the Lynnfield family, so just a reminder to adjourn in his honor if we could.
Thank you. Thank you. City Attorney Report.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we have no reportable actions from closed session tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to ask my colleagues to adjourn in the name of Drake Charles. We'd be here an hour if we were going to start to list all the things Drake did, but the funny thing is, he never, you'd never know it. And that's just the type of gentleman that he was. He, he paid for people's tuition when people needed to go on mission trips. He was just, he was just there for everybody. And we're all going to be the worse off for his loss. That's my motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.